Some type of expectation of what people are saying when they come here. And I think that's really the best way to do it is to get them engaged and say, hey, this is what we're hearing, and how can we help you fix that?
And y'all can communicate with the chief if there's crime issues going on or anything like that, that we can address those in our local motels.
Chris, let me, I have a question. Your 2017 budget projection is $51,500. Does that take into account the increase in the hotel motel tax?
It doesn't. It does not take into account the increase in the hotel motel tax or the new hotel coming online, which I'm not a contractor, but it looks like it probably will come online late summer, I would think. So it doesn't include that. That would just be a windfall, if you will, of money, once that happens. These are just projections that we projected based off of the collection from points.
And the other comment, Councilman Best had got his line out of in there for sports, but I don't see anyone in there about concerts at the mill.
Yeah. Now, those two separate budgets, that concert money stays in the general fund budget. This is only money that's expended by the CBB, which is that portion that can only be used for promotional stuff. And as I say, informing people about things that are going on.
Which would include concerts if we had a big concert.
Well, if you remember the example I gave when we were talking about the 8%, you asked the question, can you buy fireworks for a 4th of July? It was no, you can't use, but you can promote the fireworks. So that's where you get in the air. When you, there will be an increase in the general fund when we do the hotel motel increase, and that money should be allocated. I don't get to make that decision, that decision from the council and city manager, how those increased funds will be allocated, but there will be additional general fund money coming to the city as a result of the increase.
I got a question, Chris. I noticed that your advertising total almost doubled, but your printing material double just about cut in half.
What was that? I'm sorry?
The printed material dropped about half of what it was.
Because we won't, we did a large rebranding in 2016 where we'd have to buy new brochures and things of that nature. You won't buy those every year, so there won't be that much need for printing materials because that's already been.
So you have a lot of printed material left over from last year?
Usually buy, you know, big bulks of brochures and then use them over two or three year period.
So, following up on that question, so who's doing the acts at the Mill Amphitheater? Who actually books those now?
That's management parks and recreation.
Okay. I want us to bring some really big acts here. Well, I'm not talking about really, really big acts now, but I want us to re-energize that, so.
I made the earth wind and fire recommendation.
That'd be a big one.
That would be a big one.
That would be really, really, really big.
Our City to the South has some pretty good bands, Driving and Crying, I think are there this year again, and so I would, I'm a very competitive person, Vicki, so.
Yeah. I did receive the subliminal Facebook message from you.
It wasn't subliminal. It was pretty direct.
Yeah, right. Pretty direct. All right. Any more questions?
One thing to point out, I thought he might show up, but I did have occasion to talk to Representative Collins today, and he said that the bill on the hotel motel tax had gotten dropped into the hopper yesterday, so it's on track to go forward.
Yeah, I was going to mention that, that we definitely want to recognize and thank Representative Collins for doing that. I noticed, I check the General Assembly website every morning to kind of see the progress, and I saw this morning that it was in there. I was like, all right, so we're good to go. So that's going to be really exciting for us, we have some great projects. If I could, real quick, before we move on to the Arts Coalition, to just give you a brief update, these are just fun topics. Friday was the bids closed for the gateway signs. We'll award those contracts, and hopefully in the next two, next 30 to 90 days, you'll see some movement on the gateway signs, directional signs in downtown. The DDA also hired a roofing consultant to start the bid process to replace the roof on the Welcome Center, so that will be moving here very, very quickly. And so we anticipate those things happening here in the next three to six months. There should be a lot of activity going on in downtown. We also, tomorrow, will be meeting with the firm that was hired by the DDA to do the hotel motel market study for downtown. We've already met with two developers that are interested in finding out what that hotel motel market study will say. So we've been extremely busy working, implementing parts of the master plan at almost, I guess, neck breaking pace, think about it. So those are just a few things I just wanted to make sure we mentioned, because it's one of those opportunities to come and speak to y'all without asking for money.
Let me ask you a question. Did you say that a bidder had been selected to do the roof on the Welcome Center?
No, we hired a roofing consultant, and they will put together the specs and the bid package, and then it will be bid out.
Okay. I thought that was the last decision on that.
I'm pretty good in a lot of things, but I couldn't tell you what type of roof to put on there. That somebody knows what they're talking about.
Okay, fair enough.
Can you do a PowerPoint presentation on a roof when you get in?
Absolutely. I could do a PowerPoint presentation on anything.
When you do, just, it's okay.
I could do a PowerPoint presentation on paint.
I won't be here for that one either.
Moving right along, item three.
Item three. As you all know, in the 2017 budget, the council allocated $15,000 to a community development grant program fund, and that fund is to be utilized by community organizations that do things in the city limits that help promote any number of things, cultural, tourism, health type related events and activities. This is our first request for the use of funds for that. The annual Arts Coalition Arts Fest, which will take place in April, is the first opportunity for us to utilize that fund. I will say that we are still, this is new, and as with anything that's new, we're still trying to work out some of the kinks, but I think we have a very good project and a very realistic request from the Arts Coalition. This will help them to make sure that their event's successful, but it also helps us identify what are our expenses as it relates to the city. We've been having a lot of dialogue over the last year about what does it actually cost the city to do these things, so we've actually put a number associated with all of the items that we use to assist a entity in doing an event at the amphitheater. So that's from the rental of the mill, the security fee, setup and breakdown time that will be used. We have, we actually are not giving the tents, we're actually renting the tents, so there's a fee for that, and also tables and chairs and anything else that they would utilize. So what we've come up with is for those expenses, on behalf of the Arts Coalition, it's $2,356.50 is what we've come up with. And that is the formal request from them, from that allocated fund for grant, community development grant programs.
Chris, what is the security fee?
That is a law enforcement officer to be on site.
Okay. And the only thing I was curious about, as I was looking over, I guess y'all have a scale where they can pick the items they need and they see the prices, so you help them. My only question is, anytime I've been to an art and craft show and everything else, usually artists, because they go all, they go to different shows, usually have their own tents. So how does that play out with something like this?
There was a, there was a lot of discussion about that. The Arts Coalition likes all of the tents to be white, because aesthetically they think it looks better, and so they prefer to provide the tents as opposed to having vendors bring their own tents. And that's totally their decision, you know, if that's what they want to do, we'll definitely provide the tents.
But I guess what I'm saying is, this is an application for a grant, right, of the money that the city has set aside to cover these expenses for ones we say, yes, we agree that that brings people to the city and everything else. So I'm not discounting what they're saying, but we're still using more of that grant money because we're going to provide the tents.
Correct. I would look at it this way, though. We're billing them for the tents, and we own the tents.
So where's the money go?
Basically to the general fund.
So we're writing a check to the City of Villa Rica for the City of Villa Rica to rent their tents?
We're giving Arts Coalition, Coalition, grant money. Then they will be billed from us for what we do, and then they will pay for that utilizing part of the grant. The grant doesn't pay for the whole event, the grant's just paying for specific parts. If you went back and forth with this about, how do you do it? And I'm of the opinion, and I agree, that you give them the rate sheet that we would charge if somebody just came out and said, I want to rent the mill, this is how much this stuff costs, and then have them pay off that rate sheet. I think that that's the best way to do it, because you're doing apples to apples, so yeah, I mean, we could just not pay, charge them for the tents, because I mean, there's really no fee. We're not, we're not in return going out renting the tents, I mean, we already own the tents.
But we set them up, and I mean, there's a cost to the city for doing this.
Well, we've also put staff time for setup and breakdown in the budget.
Well, if it becomes necessary in the future, you know, with that grant money, we want it to spread further, then maybe we'd look at some of those. Well, they only need $1.50 worth of chairs, so we're good there.
And I will keep in mind.
$0.50 a piece, three chairs.
I will keep in mind the awarding of the grant. I mean, you don't have to give them this amount, you can give them a different amount, except for discretion of the council, how the funds are awarded.
This gives us, if I'm hearing what you're saying, this gives us a snapshot. If anyone come to us, this is how much the grant would be.
Right. And it makes it across the board. If another group comes, they're going to be charged $25 for a tent. If they want Parks and Rec employees, they're $25 an hour. If they want law enforcement, it's 35. And that way, it's not a, well, how much is it?
That way, it always remains consistent. It makes very good sense to me to run it like this. On where it says exhiber fees, this looks like it's been crossed out. Has it been?
No, this is, they're, what they're projecting they're going to generate from selling booth space. That's really the only way they generate revenue for this event. It's hard to know how many people are actually going to sign up for a space, so they're projecting, and it's a sliding scale as well. So if they donate a piece of artwork that they will then turn around and auction off, their vendor fee is lower than if they just pay the flat out rate without donating a piece of artwork. So this is just what they're projecting to generate from vendor fees.
And this is all new. This used to be a city sponsored event. They were part of us, right? Now they are independent and, in a sense, taking care of themselves.
Correct.
I think this is a great event for the city. We have some very talented artists in this area, and I'm just, I'm really excited about this. I love the banner, don't know who did the artwork, but I love it, and I would like to see some sort of banner like that on the downtown post down here to promote this event, but I am really excited about this.
Isn't that easy?
Easy enough for me?
Strange look on your face.
No, no, you know. I'm, you know.
He misses not doing a PowerPoint.
It's, yes, I'm in uncharted territory. I feel like I should control myself.
Thank you, Chris.
All right, thank you all.
Thanks, Chris.
Tab D, Public Works, Pete?
That's for the fun stuff.
You know, it sure is nice to see department heads up here talking about what they like the most.
Amen.
Their work.
I agree.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Council. The first word of business is more of, I guess, a disclosure slash update.
Pete, would you mind picking the mic up, so?
Yeah.
Can you hear me now? Is that better?
Yes.
We don't have anything to work at on this.
I don't have anything.
No, we don't. And I apologize, when we get to the second topic, I've got some handouts.
Okay.
And I've just been kind of coming down to the wire, didn't know whether I was able to pull it off or not for this work session, but I'll get to that in a minute.
And let me say this right here, and I'm not throwing you under the bus, this applies to everybody, but I'm sure, Mike, that you will set a deadline for all the department heads to have that information to you, so that you can give it, and no one has asked me to do this, so I'm not, I'm not trying to, but that way, Elise is not struggling at the last minute to get us information, and the council's not struggling at the last minute to try to, you know, understand what's going on, and we all kind of understand what it is, so not throwing you under the bus.
We do need to revisit the timeline, though.
Yep.
It's been a unique.
And it does apply to everybody.
It's been a unique week or two, which has made it hard on everybody.
It really has, especially at my camp. It's been a very busy couple of weeks.
Yes.
But with that being said, during the transition of David Millar leaving, we, I approached him about getting involved with a pressure management project that was kind of an offshoot from a GFA project that was already in place, that we qualified for before I got here last January. And I was fortunate enough to be able to meet their deadline to get that project done. On the heels of that project, it generated a whole menu of things related to our distribution system, our water quality, et cetera, that they recommended. One thing that Woodruff and Kern had developed when they were here was a water model of our distribution system. And during that time last year, we had to shake the tree pretty hard to get that model back from them. We did, and the company, Mr. Eleo Arnella, with Smart Water Analytics, is the one who did this project with us through GFA. It was a grant program. The water model desperately needs to be updated, it needs to be calibrated to where we are today. One of the problems with that calibration, of course, is we had to plant down for a long period of time. We do have some concerns in parts of our distribution system related to pressure and flow, and also how the water age, how quickly we're turning our water over in the system, and how we're pumping from point A to point B. Are we being efficient and effective? So we engaged Mr. Arnella and told David that this was kind of an emergency status to get this pushed through, because we're trying to springboard on top of this project to go after another grant, that I'll be doing an application for that grant, the deadline's March 15th. One requirement that they had was, we also had to have our 2016 water audit completed, so we, and the deadline for that was March 1st, and we've got it right under the wire. All of this will help us toward possibly being successful with that grant. So the total amount for this project was $14,300, and I just wanted to bring that to your attention because it happened during the transition, just prior to David Millar leaving, and then where we're at right now. We started yesterday, they put in an assertion probe that measures flow and pressure. Out in a part of the distribution system, we'll be putting out pressure recorders this week, and then flowing some hydrants and getting documentation off of that, and it will be plugged into this model and updated.
Was it a budgeted item? Was it in the budget?
It was not a budgeted item, no.
Let me, let me help you out here, Lewis, because I know, working with David before he left, this addresses a problem in a part of our town, Pool Road, and, you know, David and I, and Pete has talked to me about it extensively, and, you know, it's something that we need to seriously look at, and as I understand it, we're basically going to be playing against the clock here to try to get this study done, so that we can possibly even get a grant to help pay for it. Is that correct?
Correct.
So, no, it's not a budgeted item, but I do, I do feel like we need to look at this seriously as a council to get this report in.
I totally agree, it's in my ward, and it's because they didn't have water pressure to fight a fire down there, they found that out. So, and you're right, it came up after the budget.
So since we have a new interim city manager, he'll find that $14,000, some odd dollars, and.
He's just going to write a check.
What was invited in the water audit?
Can you have that information for us, to Mike, so they can get it in our council books for Tuesday night?
You mentioned the water audit. What did that involve?
It's very detailed, actually. In fact, we had to work very closely with Sarah and her group. We have to use all of our production numbers, we have to cross-reference that to what was billed, what is, and they have several categories of what is billed and metered, what is billed and un-metered, and so on and so forth. And you put all these components together, and you get a leak indicator, factor that's generated from that, kind of tells us how tight our system is, where we need to improve and work on various aspects of the distribution system, and, and the way the plant operates with the tanks. So this all goes hand in glove, too, with a lot of the conversation going forward about, you know, how the cost of service is going forward. So it's very detailed.
Did you find a 300,000 gallon loss?
Going to be the next question.
I'm sure it's in there somewhere.
Good. I've been trying for 12 years, trying to find that 300,000 gallons of water. Maybe longer than that.
Yeah. The, I won't go into this right now, but the, the, the new buzzword right now is, they try to distill this down into what's called non-revenue water. It used to be years ago, just up until a couple of years ago, where they used a broad term, unaccounted for water, but they didn't break it down into these components that every, every utility has, and it kind of fine tunes where those water losses may be, so.
For example, washing filters out at the, at the treatment plant, flushing system, flushing programs.
Exactly. And tracking everything that we do, being good stewards of the water that, from, from the source to the end user, which is the consumer.
Have we determined that we are doing the best way of accounting for that water versus what we produce, and it's what is paid for? Is there another way, I guess I'm asking?
The best way is, I'm standing here right now to answer that question. I think we have a lot of work to do in that regard.
Okay. That's fair enough. Thank you.
Okay. The second one, of course, is the biggie on my schedule here, the paving project update. If you'll bear with me a minute, I'm going to hand out a couple of things.
While he's doing that, real quick, I noticed at the convention in Savannah this year, there's a couple new classes that have to do with water sewer distribution, and I had never seen those before, so, you know, you get three choices, so even if you don't get it as your first choice, sometime you put it as your second or third if you don't get one of the others. But it was interesting to see, because that's kind of a big issue for us, and I have limited knowledge in that area.
I'll be doing municipal water and wastewater systems.
There's one in Public Works, too, that I'm excited about, that's a, that's a big area of our budget.
I give it to office, I don't want any.
It dated yesterday?
I didn't have a bunch of Chris's thing, okay. All right. I know Jeff was looking at something, he had something.
That's okay. I have a copy of that.
Okay.
I'm supposed to take one of these and pass it along? I got two of them. These are the same, I got two. They must be the same, because I'll forget one. These are my gave to them.
Lays free with their giveaways.
Please hold the mic very close to your mouth here, because nine out of the 10 complaints that I received in the last month have been on roads, so there are probably a lot of folks watching us right now that want to know what the issue is here.
And if they're not watching now, they might watch the video afterwards.
Don't shoot the messenger.
I won't.
Well, a synopsis here. We met with a contractor and engineer on this, this week, February 28th, and we discussed the project. Of course, I had to get a lot of backstory on this, because I wasn't involved with it. Afterwards, we went into the field, we went down all the roads, and the engineer marked various areas as we went with orange paint, so if you go through town, you'll see them marked on the pavement. Personally, during the meeting, I, yes, ma-
Who's the engineer that?
Skip Leighton with Falcon Designs.
Okay, got it. Okay, yes.
And at the meeting, I was, I was a little surprised, because I was kind of anticipating the contractor having their own punch list, and then the engineer having their punch list, which they hadn't generated one at that time. So after we did the field visit, this letter that I passed out to you all, dated March 1st, was a response from the engineer, and if you look at the four bulleted items, that is the punch list.
I got to ask what a birdbath and a holiday is in a pavement.
Better get there.
Well, that's a great question, because I do think that we need to get some clarification on that. Birdbath, basically, would be dips that hold water. Holidays, I know what a definition that I would have, but I don't know if it's the same definition they have, and I think we need to get some clarification on that. I think we need to get clarification on all of these bulleted items, because to me, it's pretty vague. I mean, I understand it's, it's a broad scope of each one of these, but I think that we need some more detail. I think that I recommend that we write a letter back to them and, and request clarification on these items.
Pete, can I, can I interrupt you just a minute? I'm going to try to save you here.
Please do.
First of all, I want to thank Charlie Davis and Pete, I want to thank you for, for meeting with them. I don't, you're not an, you're not an asphalt expert, is that, is that a fair statement?
That is a fair statement.
Charlie, are you an expert? So we depend heavily on Falcon Designs for that service. Is that, is that a fair statement?
That is.
I'm not happy with this list. I'm in the asphalt business, and I don't know what a holiday is. I wish I had more holidays, but.
Yeah, me too.
I'm not sure what that is, so it's my understanding that, well, I won't even say that, I would just like council to consider having Mr. Mecklen look at this contract and see if the city has received what they paid for. My feel is that we have not received that, and while I expect H-E-H Paving to fulfill the obligations in their contract, I certainly expect Falcon Design to be our project engineer and to provide us with a list and photographs of those things that need to be replaced. So, Mr. Mecklen, please weigh in at any point here, but.
That's something we've already talked about. I've talked to Pete, we're going to prepare a response to this letter, and the process of doing that now.
Okay. I think it's safe to say that we are not happy with the asphalt job, nor the project management end of that, and to the extent that we can, we're going to, we're going to fix that, so.
I'm dying to know what a holiday is.
Well, to just second that, in case there's any misunderstanding, I'm not happy with it either, and we've talked about this. I wonder what the significance of this is?
Well, the synopsis there was given, forwarded to me by David Millar.
Well, I mean that you brought it for us today. Want to point something out?
Yes, on the back page. Thank you. You'll see there's some bullet, bulleted items there, that was an assessment by Mr. Woods, who works for Georgia DOT. That was an assessment by Mr. Woods, who works for Georgia D O T. David had reached out to him and actually walked the site with, with Mr. Woods. And this was Mr. Woods's assessment, which is a little bit more in line with what, what I observed out there as well. And I think, again, I, I need to cross-reference with Mr. Mecklen and make sure that we're looking at the language in the contract and making sure that we're getting what we, what we paid for.
It looks like a holiday is where the asphalt got too thin.
Looks like a holiday is where the work is more shabby than the rest.
It looks like it got thin there. It shorted the, asphalt was shorted in those areas. So that means it got too thin.
Okay. I appreciate that Mr. Mecklen is working on a letter for that, if necessary.
I just want to clarify something.
Yes, ma'am.
Skip Leighton with Falcon Engineer, was he also slash project manager?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay, because I believe we got this in email form.
We did.
I've read this. I'm thinking, I, it, it looks very familiar, but I like having a printed copy, too. Something that concerned me is, it seemed obvious to even those of us who aren't asphalt people that there was a problem when we just went out and drove. But it doesn't seem to, okay, if there's a project manager, I'm assuming that's the person overseeing everything, they would notice if something wasn't right, and they would come to us. It seemed to us it was us and citizens that were going, there's a problem, but we're not the project managers. And I don't know if it happened any different than that, but that's, because I was out of town part of this time, and I was getting emails. Was this ever brought to us by anybody that worked on the job? Or did it take citizens and us going, what's wrong with the roads?
Let me interrupt and interject here. The answer to your, short answer to your question is no. But to follow up from that, we're in the process of doing an investigation to figure out what happened. Nobody knows answers to those questions, and any, any answers to it is just speculation right now. So let us try and figure out what has happened on this project and, and then try and fill it in. We don't know whether or not people did their jobs or not. We gotta figure that out.
Have we got a timeline on that?
For the investigation? I'm hopeful within the next week. Pete, and I just got involved in this maybe three days ago.
I don't want to push it, you know.
But hopefully by next week, we'll, we'll have more answers. I've had a chance to look at some of the documents, not all of them yet.
I think the contract, I got the contract. I think it's some one hundred and forty-some odd pages.
Right. Yeah, it's pretty complicated.
Well, I read a lot of it, but it got.
Might need more than a week.
Well, we had contracts with H E H. We had contracts with Falcon Design. So we, we just need to sort through whose responsibility, who had responsibility for what parts of the project, and then we can figure out whether or not they fulfilled that.
I just want to say I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Thank you, Pete.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Pete.
Brother Charlie, come on up. Sing us a little song, would you, before you get started?
Charlie's gonna.
It is.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Mine's gonna be a whole lot easier.
I would hope so.
I've got three budgeted trucks for the two thousand seventeen budget. They're light-duty pickup trucks for your consideration. One will be a two thousand seventeen F-150 two-wheel-drive truck for the Recreation Department. Two will be a F-150 four-wheel-drive pickups, one for the Stormwater Department and one for the Wastewater Treatment Plant. The, we'll start with the one for the Recreation Department, two-wheel-drive. I have, we sent all these out to two state bid contract holders and also across the street to our local dealer. On the two-wheel-drive truck, Alan Vigil Ford was a low bid. Wade Ford came in second, and Don Rich Ford was the highest bid with about roughly three hundred dollars difference there.
You said two eighty-four, is that it?
Yep.
And then we have two four-wheel-drive trucks. And Don Rich Ford was significantly lower on those versus the two state bid contract holders. The truck going to the Stormwater Department manager will take the four-wheel-drive Expedition that he has. It's a two-thousand-year model. And it would be my intention to move that to the Street Department to use during bad weather events only. It's getting very old, but in those kind of conditions, it works very well. So it will be parked other than ice and snow events, or, you know, if we had a bad tornado season. The old pickup truck that we need to replace at the Wastewater Treatment Plant, I would like to move to the garage to be used by the new building maintenance position. It's gonna be starting there in about ten days. It will basically be used to go back and forth, take care of maintenance with a train, so it won't be on the road and won't cost a fortune. Neither one of these vehicles has much residual value. And the truck that was going to the Recreation Department will be replacing one of the very old inmate vans that, I don't know how it's still running. But that one, we will surplus. And we'll get that declared surplus when these come and get that on gov deals. But with our relationship with our local dealer and with the other trucks being roughly three, the one truck in question being three hundred dollars higher, by the time I take someone to North Atlanta, buy that truck, spend the day there and come back, we pretty much spent that money. So I would, it would be the staff's recommendation that we, if you approve these trucks, that we try to buy them all next door at our local dealer.
Is this in the budget for this year?
These are budgeted, all three of these.
I think you did really good, Charlie.
All right. Well, thank you.
It's a really good explanation for using Don Rich, too.
Yeah, I would like to say at this point, too, Councilman Best mentioned it earlier. It was good to see the department heads here today. I appreciate y'all all being here. But I, I just want to shout out to the management team, Sarah and everybody else. I asked that these formats start being put in the, the council, I think last month, actually. And Sarah and all the department heads do that. And I, and I think, I hope the council realizes it's a lot easier now to look at and, you know, where the, you know, where the money's coming from and what the, what it's for. So.
I appreciate these cover sheets. They, they do help.
Yeah, and I was just gonna say, the notes. I knew, you know, by reading through this, I knew what you had planned to do with the old ones and why, and I appreciate the notes.
All right. Thank you very much. Next, next, next month, we'll be looking at dump trucks.
As long as they're in the budget.
Thank you, Charlie. I want to add something to this, and this may be a Sarah item, or it may be a Pete item. But C D B G grant status, Sarah, would you mind? I know we were two signatures shy of being able to, to get that grant in the works. I sent texts to Councilman, who did I send texts to? I can't remember.
What's your name? McPherson.
McPherson, and to Councilman Marchman. And have we received those two letters?
So, yes, this is for a half a million dollar C D B G grant to replace the water infrastructure in a select part of town. We do have to prove to the state that it's seventy-one percent low to moderate income. Late winter, or what do you call that fall? November, December, January, we had a grad student that was working for us to collect surveys from this area. Again, we had to get their household income and demographics to send back, so we could prove that that area was low to mod. As of two weeks ago, we were four surveys short. Staff went out and got two of those surveys. But through discussions, we found that we had six people that refused to survey, and that actually counts against us. So instead of being at seventy-one percent, we're sitting at sixty-six percent. So staff went out today and tried to make contact with those people again. Not one of them was home or answered their door. Left information with them, hoping to hear back from them. This will not disqualify us from the money, but from what I've talked to with the grant writers, they may have to remove a street or two. Again, they're trying to find an area within the area that meets that seventy-one percent.
Do you have a timeframe?
Just passed.
We're past it.
I was gonna say, if, if I know the streets and what houses to hit, you give it to me, I'll find somebody. How many do we need?
There are eight, six that refused to survey and two that we just haven't gotten a response back yet.
So I don't want to go back, I don't want to waste time going back to six, but if somebody will just give me where to go.
The problem is, even if we only get those two, that's not gonna bring us from sixty-six to seventy-one percent.
You need eight now, right?
Okay, well, let's get a couple of us, let's find a way to get them.
Yes.
I'd sink for a half million dollar.
If we can get them, this is the grant money to do this.
Again, we don't lose the money, but the area may shrink. So you would only.
We get less, we get less done.
Right.
So this is money to replace our aging infrastructure water lines. And we are applying for it, and if, and we have had folks that have actually refused to, to be a part of the survey. So, I mean.
I'll go. I'm serious. I'll go.
How many people did we approach?
There were a hundred and four houses, so to only have eight non-responses, that's pretty good. But again, if they refuse to respond, if they don't, they count against us. Basically, it doesn't work towards our paper. So they, the application deadline is April first. But they need the information so that the engineer can start working at the proposal. That's why we go with the application. So it's already, we're already into March, so like I said, they were needing it on Monday.
This is a top priority. I mean, this was, we've talked about, right, our water lines, our water lines.
I don't mean to, I don't mean to be ugly in any way, but why didn't we know about this a little earlier? I mean, if we could help, this is important.
She, she's been bringing it up at every council meeting. She's talked about it.
She just said that was last year.
Let's, um, let's just.
Darren, go do it.
Councilman Marchman and, and why can't I say your name? McPherson. Would y'all please work on that and see if we can get those, let, let's, let's try to get that.
Need eight, right?
I can knock on doors. I know how to do that.
We, we need eight folks.
Like I said, the intern's been out. I don't know how many times she contacted these people. We had two staff members that went out last week. We had code enforcement that's tried, and Chris Pike went out today. So I asked the grant writers, at what point will we be considered harassing these people?
I, I have contacted the Carroll County SWAT team.
Fill it out and run it, right?
Now, what is the location? Is this on Pooh Road? Is this, where is it?
No, it's in the area of North Avenue.
Put Prissy on it.
She's on North Avenue.
There are, there, there's a, the boundaries are drawn. There's a select area. We do have the addresses. Again, this would be the fourth or fifth time we've tried to make contact with these people.
Do we get a letter from Prissy?
Can I get that in an email?
No, do we get a letter from you?
Survey, did you do a survey?
You list cross-wards, or is it one ward or what?
Take a few of those payday candy bars.
It is in more than one ward. Ms. Marchman and I looked at it. It was only two in her ward. The rest is in Ms. McPherson's ward.
But one of them is Prissy, right? So that's seven. Now we need seven.
Let the record reflect it.
A little far right there.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Tabby, Public Safety, Chief Mansour. Chief, before you start, I, I just want to thank you personally and publicly for standing in for, I guess, better part of two weeks. Probably felt like six months to you, but you did a tremendous job, as we knew you would, and kept us all up to date and sent us text messages about everything that was going on at night and during the day. And, and was even involved in a rec, no doubt, trying to get information to us in a timely fashion. So thank you for doing a great job. We knew that you would.
I appreciate that, sir.
My, my question is.
I am. I, I asked Mr. Jackson if he would be totally offended if I hugged him when he walked in the door.
How, how do you like driving that Humvee?
The Humvee? I've enjoyed it.
I, I was a little bit concerned on one of those texts I got from y'all. It said, Mike Jackson attempted suicide. Then it went on to explain what suicide was about. I first saw that, and I said, oh, no. We're not that hard on him yet.
I don't know about that one. I didn't send that one. Okay. I believe the first item that I have is the community service update. I did pass out some paperwork for you to look at. We have been working on this. We still have a good bit to do, but we have gotten started on it. We have come up with a schedule that we believe would be best served. We have talked to Mr. Benedict just to get his input on everything. And we are working towards posting the two positions. I have talked, we have talked to Stephanie about, I'm sorry.
He was, he was holding onto our paperwork.
You mayor dropped the ball. He had several copies here and earlier. We're all looking, so.
I understand. You're still looking at the format, I'm sure. This is not the right format. This is just a informational thing. But anyway, we have talked to Stephanie about posting those positions. She's gotten started on that and has sent back what, you know, possibly we could send out, and we're gonna make sure of that. We do have a schedule on here. We're gonna make sure they work with the grass-cutting folks to pick up the trash before the, the grass is cut, so it doesn't make that mess. We have already started outfitting one of the vans that will be used. And our van, our police van, it's only used on Fridays anyway, so we'll be able to use it for the other days. It will be used in court for Fridays, so that, so we'll only have one community service group out on Friday and one group on Saturday, is what we're looking at. And that way, we won't have more than the, the hours needed as far as the people working part-time. The, the budget approved two part-time workers for the community service. And based on that, we're trying to figure out a schedule that way, and, and we'll work towards that. I've also sent the paperwork to Mr. Mecklen for him to look over everything. He has sent back some revisions that we have fixed as far as some of the paperwork. So we are definitely moving forward. I would like a timeframe that you want this implemented or started, and.
Yesterday.
Really?
I understand. So we're probably looking at no later than April first. Is that good?
It is, just before the grass starts growing. The, the city looks really bad on the sides of the streets right now, so.
I agree. And when we do it before then, we will, but that's just what we're looking for.
As far as I'm concerned, the sooner the better.
Yes, sir.
A question would be, what are the plans for the Douglas County Boot Camp crew that also is in that trailer?
That's in that what?
Trailer. And, did I not read that correctly? That, that's where they're gonna meet, is the trailer behind the police department?
That's what we had, we had talked about. I honestly wasn't familiar with them already being in there, so I guess that's something we will discuss. Because, yeah, we don't want them in at the same time, for sure. So we'll, we'll work on that. That wasn't, that was, that's on me. I didn't know that for sure. So we'll work on that. I appreciate it. Any other questions?
Sooner the better.
All right. All right. That's done. The, the next one is the surplus equipment that we're gonna ask for you to allow us to get rid of, one way or the other. And that's just something we do usually once or two, twice a year. What's funny about that?
We got some interesting items in there.
Well, what's funny is about one box containing numerous knives. What? We gonna get rid of them?
This is stuff that seems to come in through evidence or, or recovered or stuff, so, yeah.
What are we gonna do with the pair of stilts?
What are we gonna do with the pair of stilts?
The V H S tapes should bring in a lot of money.
I feel good about those.
Where would you list this at, chief?
Sir?
Where would you list these items?
Anything that's worth selling will do gov deals. We, we have done the little public auctions, but Charlie can attest that we bring a whole lot on those. But anything worth bringing will do gov deals, like pallet loads of computer equipment or something like that. But a lot of this, to be honest, is, is gonna be destroyed.
Just junk.
What about the yard sale that the explorers make the money off? Does any of it come in helpful to sell there? I know they make the money off the tables. I don't know if they could have that table.
I, I don't think they, I don't know if they set up or not, but, but I can look at that and see. Yeah.
Highway seventy-eight yard sale?
Yes, sir. I'm gonna get to that.
One man's.
One's a man's.
I knew that was coming.
I'm not looking for V H S tapes, but.
Georgia, Georgia Bulldog sunglasses?
Oh, yeah.
Number three.
All right, uh...
Sell those to the mayor.
Yes.
The third, the third thing is the Highway seventy-eight yard sale, uh, Sarah has been helping me a lot, and, and before I go any further, you did compliment me. I had a great group helping me, and I appreciate them, they were awesome in, in supporting me in that position, and, and, uh, I, I definitely appreciate them, and, and, and I told Mr. Jackson, uh, when he got here, that we do have an awesome group here. And, uh, that, uh, they, they're very capable to do their jobs, and, and I appreciate working with all of them, so. Uh, but the, the seventy-eight yard sale is usually a certain day, like the twenty-second, but there's conflicts there. Uh, one of the conflicts is the explorers are gone to an event that day to compete, and it's the same date that I was given by Peg for the Mira Lake yard sale. So it would conflict, I don't think it's a good idea to have it the same time as those, especially with the explorers out of town, so we have set the date tentatively on, on, uh, the eighth of April. And the same times, I did text you guys a flyer that Courtney completed about fifteen minutes ago for me, uh, and sent to me, which I appreciated, I went ahead and forwarded that to y'all, uh, to look at. And, uh, the explorers will be handling most of the work, because they did get the money last year, and we're going to let them get the money this year. Uh, I, Sarah was doing most of the work, and I told Sarah it's not really for her to have to do, so I'm doing that along with our staff. Uh, also, Courtney did the flyer, but I'm gonna, we're gonna sign the parking spots, we're gonna do that part of it, so we're trying to take as much off of Courtney as we can, too. I mean, it, it kind of makes sense, it's where our guys are getting the money out of. Any questions on that or concerns?
I like the flyer.
Is that the flyer?
Yes, sir.
That's the one, okay, it's a good-looking flyer.
If you like the flyer, I did it, if you don't, Courtney don't. Courtney did it and did a great job.
It looks good, I like it, so you want to do April the eighth as opposed to April the twenty-second?
Yes, sir.
And you're saying that Peg, out there at Mira Lake, says that they're going to do theirs on the twenty-second?
Peg always sends me a request for officers, and she has already done that, and I've already got it on my calendar for the twenty-second, yes, sir.
Okay, I, I just knew Peg wasn't doing it this year, and I didn't know what the date was, but she still did that part, okay.
Yes, sir.
I got a question, it, one part it says Saturday, April twenty-third, down here it says Saturday, April twenty-second. Okay.
That's what they want to do this year.
All right.
How'd I do on that, did I do good?
Sorry.
Item four?
Item four is...
That's the big one.
The big one, okay, that's the cars. Uh, you have, as a group, you have approved us to equip the four cars, or five cars, uh, that we have, the, the four we got and the, the one we had last year that we did not equip. Uh, and the, the amount of money on there is fifty-seven thousand, we, Sarah has shown exactly where all the money came from, I appreciate that, because there were some questions on that. We have been able to use some equipment from other vehicles, uh, that, uh, we've either gotten rid of, or we're at the radio shop or whatever, that is saving us a, a good bit of money, too. Uh, so that's been a, a good help, but this just shows you what the equipment is, and, and basically, uh, the purchase and everything on that. This, the vendor that we use on the cameras, uh, the same vendors we've used, uh, for a long time, it is, you know, the same, what is that you call, a, a sole vendor or whatever it's called? Uh, the same with the Metropolitan Communications, uh, and the, the striping, so all of those are the same.
I don't have a problem with any of this, I, in fact, but I would like for you to look into, and I saw this morning on Good Morning America, or whatever Channel Five was, or whatever it is. Anyway, the, the camera that fits the Glock on, on the end of the gun?
Oh, I saw that.
That, that, and, and it really, it really, it, it takes the, the... Well, the guesswork, and it, it takes everything out of the equation, other than the truth, when the officer pulls his gun, the camera turns on, well, he don't have to fire it, he just pulls the gun. But it also showed that the body camera that the officer had on, uh, if he points his weapon with both hands, it covers the camera, whereas the gun camera would, would show actually what took place. Would you please look into see how much that cost?
Yes, sir, I, I'd be glad to, I did see that story also, uh, we'll be glad to look at that, uh, and the, the other thing that you have to consider is, you know, any of the storage and all of that, just like the body cameras, you've got a lot that plays into that. But, uh, we will definitely look into that, sir.
Do we have body cameras on our officers now, do we use them?
We do have some, uh, we've not equipped all of them, because it was another one of those unfunded mandates where they wanted us to buy the cameras and wanted us to, but it is so expensive to store all of that, and, you know, so we, we have not done it with all of our cars or all of our officers, but we have done it with, uh, the school resource officers, bike, all people like that, K-9, they do have body cameras.
Any questions on item four?
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Take it easy on the Humvee, will you?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Tabby F., Parks and Recreation, Ms. Vicki?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. The item that is before you, it is, uh, staff's recommendation concerning the July third fireworks contractor. This is an annual event, uh, reckon, with, uh, in which we make this selection, staff put out the invitation to bid, which was out for approximately a month. We got back two respondents, both the respondents, uh, put the bids at twenty-three thousand, staff recommendation is East Coast Pyrotechnics, Inc. We evaluated, uh, both of the bids, and we essentially were looking at the shell quantities that were going to be displayed that evening, and what we found is that we were going to essentially get the greatest number of shells, we gave the most weight, um, to the larger shells. But in essence, um, this has been a contractor that we have used over the past several years, so, um...
This is the same one I did last year?
That is correct.
And the year before, the year, the year before.
You know, and I, I don't have an issue with that, but if you're going to put in two, uh, if you got two bid responses, I'd like to at least see the information from the other bidder, even if we're going to go with your recommendation, which I'm sure we will, but there's nothing else in here about, about that second B. at J and M displays.
Well, there is.
Where's it at?
Let me point to, uh...
Well, maybe it's not in my book.
The bid comparison sheet, the real colorful sheet, and I recognize that sheet since I developed it. That's right here. Let me, let me just say this, because I've done it most of my adult life, you know, analyzing fireworks bids is only slightly less cumbersome than analyzing playground, ground, ground bids. And, uh, so Courtney and I came up with this, uh, way to, to look at those, and so if you look at that sheet, that bid comparison sheet, we have one we can put up on the, uh, display, too, for the, I guess we can do that next, well, let's do it now, because I don't know if it's going to be on the, center of the doc or not.
Yours is, let me give you mine, because it's horizontal on the...
Well, you're right, it doesn't give the details, but, you know, the assumption, and I'm not sure if she mentioned that, but both of these bidders met the minimum qualifications, is that correct?
That is correct.
And those, those minimum qualifications were personal liability insurance, uh, they had to have a license, they're going to handle the license through the Fire Marshal's Office, and so, you know, th- those are the basic things, but when you get right down to it, when you're, when you're analyzing, uh, bids for fireworks, you're looking at number of shells that go up in the air. And, uh, I can just tell you from experience that some of the smaller companies in the past would bid small shells, a two-inch, three-inch shell is a lot less expensive, you can buy those in Alabama. And, uh, so when you get up to a six-inch shell, th- those are what you're typically looking for as far as money is concerned. So that's why that column's over there where it says total three-inch to six-inch shells on the show, and you can see that there's a, about a hundred shell difference, there's nine-hundred-and-forty-one three-to-six-inch shells, uh, in the bid from East Coast Pyrotechnics, and that's just...
And even if you, once you even add in what are the smaller ones, they still have a higher quantity, uh, than the other respondent on the bid?
Uh, that prelude to final, that four-hundred versus none, um, number of shells.
Right, so they have, they've broken down what is, um, one-and-a-half to two-inch shells in the prelude to final, they have four-hundred, and then...
The other company had nothing, huh?
Not in that's, the smaller size shells, but if you look at the total counts and quantity, the ones that are highlighted in red, and I don't know how well, do you have a colored sheet, or is it a black and white sheet?
It's color.
Okay, so if you're looking at, say, the body of the program, we'll just start there, with the three all the way up to the six-inch, the total quantity there is five-hundred-and-seventy-eight with J and M, and East Coast is six-hundred-and-five. If you jump down to, um, the total shells in the body in the finale program, you see what the breakdown is there, the column next to it, total three-to-six-inch shells, that's the combination of the body of the program and the finale. Um, what you don't see is the further breakdown, we didn't break down, um, the one-and-a-half inches on the smaller ones, but again, when you add those in it, those are the ones we, like I said, those are the smaller shells, and particularly for that site, you really want the ones that are going up in the air. So, um, we really more heavily weighted to the larger shells for that particular site.
I guess I'm, I, what I'm wondering, what, what's going on with those four-hundred, maybe you can tell me?
Well, what, what that is, if you, if you know what a false finale is, uh, if you're familiar, you've been to our fireworks shows, and fireworks shows are just a choreography of fireworks, that's all it is. So the preload, prelude is when everybody thinks that, wow, that's really cool, and all of a sudden, you know, hundreds of shells go off, and, uh, and just to kind of give you an idea of what it looks like visually, and, and, and as soon as that prelude is finished, and that's when the grand finale starts. So what it does, if you've been to fireworks shows, the ones that, you probably have never thought about it, but subliminally, the ones that really are the best ones are the ones that where you never look in the air where there's not a firework up there. And, uh, so this prelude keeps the sky full of, of, of shells, smaller shells, uh, but it keeps the sky full of shells, so that there's not a twenty-second lag between the last firework and then the, 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 uh, grand finale. It's sort of like, you know, you go from that last shell in the main body, and then you have that prelude that keeps, you know, fireworks in the air, and then suddenly they start with the big shells.
Big stuff, okay.
I just know every year the rec department does a phenomenal job with that show, so whatever you're doing, just keep doing it, I mean, it's good, Villarica does a super job.
Further questions on item one? Item two, Connors Road Park?
And if you, at least if you can pull that information up, I am, I'm just going to use this instead, I've just brought, just for the sake of... I'm blocking you. You just take one. If you don't mind putting the aerial photograph. I thought it might obstruct the view of the council. That's fine. Yes.
So this next item is the presentation of the Connors Road Master Plan. Staff has worked over the last several months, we've, uh, conducted a series of planning meetings with the community to explore ultimately how this park would be used. As you know, this property came to the city as a donation, as for a passive park, um, through a series of planning meetings and the community getting out and walking the park, we were able to come up with what was ultimately, um, a concept to bring before you for consideration. Uh, staff worked with Falcon Design that, uh, assisted with facilitating the planning meetings, and coming back with drafting, if you will, this design. Through, uh, what you can see here, through a discovery, if you will, of the, all of the planning meetings, what you see are really two parts going on in this, um, particular project, you see what will be the area that is more for walking trails in the rear, that's really designated primarily for walking and biking. What you see at the front is the area that is, will probably have a little bit more use, one of the things that we discovered as we were going through this planning process is that we certainly wanted to make sure that there was a place where there was much more accessibility for the community. Through part of the discovery of getting out and walking the area, the back rear had a few more challenges in terms of navigating and accessibility, so what you have for the front, and you just may want to toggle between the two images, so, um, we spent a little bit more time working and planning on... The front area, so I'll focus really more on the conversation here, and certainly we have the consultant who, um, can go in a little bit more detail with us, but this was the area that is really the, the flattest portion of the property, and certainly had the greatest, uh, number of demands in terms of what the community was looking and interested in really being able to plan. Um, so, the area that you see before you, there are dog parks planned for the right portion of the property, an area for the smaller and larger dogs, um, fenced off, and to the right. Uh, as we, I mentioned very briefly, there is a portion, thanks for filming in, where we discovered that there were accessibility issues at the rear of the property, so what we wanted to do was make sure that we could provide an area for everyone. That area includes, uh, a, a smaller walking trail around, uh, that open lawn area, it's a place that you would be able to come, whether you may be a senior that has mobility issues, or a place that you wanted to be able to bring small children, maybe they had a tricycle. Again, our goal with creating this park was to have it be a place where everybody could use and really be able to take advantage of what it has to offer. So, um, you know, again, conceptually, you have an open area there, a walking track, uh, we designated a place for, um, a smaller pavilion, bathrooms, um, and what was also important that we heard was, you know, make sure that there was a place for our public safety officers, um, you know, to be able to maybe store equipment if they needed to get out and get back along the, the track. The, you want to toggle back to the, what's, to the, to the larger one? One of the, thanks. The rear of the property is, what we were able to do, um, with working with some of the groups, was identify an area, um, that is roughly about two miles long, where you could really get out and walk the property. Um, one of the things that was certainly important, um, was to really be able to provide an experience for everyone, some of the things that we talked about was creating an environment which was certainly safe for individuals, if you're walking and you're biking. How can you create an environment where if you're approaching each other, you're creating the visibility to see as you're approaching from either side? So one of the things that was commonly heard, um, and we found the best way, is to really have pedestrians who are coming in, the walkers come in and enter one way, so you'd be approaching counterclockwise, and if you were on bikes, you may be approaching, you enter in, and you'd approach clockwise, so you're, there's the visibility as you're approaching each other at all times.
So this is a bike trail?
It does allow for bike use, absolutely, so whether you're walking, whether you're biking, those were the predominant uses that came up.
How far around is this trail, how long is it?
This is two miles, and what you actually see along the side, there are some images from about every quarter mile along the, uh, walking trail.
Have you considered to cut across at the short point where it comes together for the older folks, in case they change their mind about making the whole out?
Yeah, that was, that was some of the feedback that we have, what we're really going to have to do is look and see... What we're really gonna have to do is look and see where it best permits it, because there are a lot of, it's just the topography and it's just the nature of the, the land, so yes, that's something that we're trying to find the best place for a cross.
Looks like the shortest point right there where it comes together.
Right, and so, so one of the things that you find when you get out there, you have some, some significant drop offs, so just being able to easily cut across when you're looking at it on a map is one thing, but when you get out on site, it's something totally different, so.
You need a top, topographing map here.
Correct, so that's something we're going to, we're at, we're going to look at to find the best place for what a, a cut across could be.
Take one of those red lines.
So the red lines are the areas that provide a little bit more challenge. We, certainly there was a, a group that worked closely with us during this planning process, and those are the more challenging trails. So if you are someone who likes to do, you know, mountain biking, those are the trails that would probably be of more interest to them. So you can get out and find the adventure that you're looking for when you're back here riding the property.
Are you through with your presentation? Is it question and answer time?
Yes, it's question and answer time, absolutely.
I had stepped out for a minute. Would you talk to us a little bit, first off, I attended at least two of these charrettes, as you call them, and there was a lot of feedback, and I appreciated all the folks who were involved, a lot of folks came out each time. So I think you've done a lot of work putting this together, but I want you to talk a little bit about this front area down here and, and when that stuff would be done, and really the, the overall project, what is the timeframe for it? Do you have it sort of, you know, broken down and we'll start this first and that kind of thing?
Well, I haven't, I don't have a hard timeframe at this particular point. Part of it was, was coming, presenting this concept to you, getting approval from it. The next part of it was to sit down and have a conversation with the organization that donated the property to us. I happened to have a conversation with them this week, just so that you understand, there were some preliminary timeframes as it related to the timber harvesting, and so they said, hey, we're outside of that window, so whether we do it or not, it'll, I'll let that totally be up to the city. But going beyond that, engineering is something that could be done fairly quickly. This is just concept, but getting down to engineering, that's something that it's budgeted, there's, there are funds that are budgeted for that, we can move forward with engineering fairly quickly. I would say that access to the property and this front area would really be the priorities in terms of the portions of the plan that would be addressed first. So, you know, depending on what that number happens to be, I'll just throw out, you typically will look at design and then identify the improvements and prioritize them from there. So that will really be the next steps after approval from the, the city council, I'd say, design and then going into prioritizing based upon what the total budget is, on which ones we will get implemented in this front area down here.
After we approve this, who will be involved? Will, will your recreation committee be involved in some of that, that discussion?
I think that's a perfect thing for them to be involved with, so in terms of prioritizing, you know, it makes sense from the engineering standpoint, if the dollars are limited and we need to figure out what needs to go first to get them to weigh in and then come back with recommendations to you as a city council as to, you know, which, what needs to move first. Design, you know, putting in the driveway, the dog parks, maybe the pavilions, the bathrooms, you know, understanding what they see as a good, would be a priority is, is a perfect thing for them to.
Let me just touch on the, the agreement that you're talking about with the people who donated the land. I haven't seen that, but in some of these meetings, we talked about, they had some say over what trees would be taken out, that kind of thing, but you, you may have clarified the last time that actually they don't. We tell them what we want and then they just agree to do the work. Is that a fair?
That, that's, that's pretty fair from the conversation that I had with them this week, they really wanted to support what we were attempting to do. So, you know, when I forwarded the concept drawings, just to let them know where we were and where we were about to proceed, the response essentially back to me was, you know, we're not looking to approve your plan, we, we really want to support you in what you're, what you're doing. So, you know, they would like to be able to generate some of the revenue from, you know, the initial discussion was the timber harvesting, and certainly they said if they're able to do that, they potentially in a position to put even more back into the park. So that was my conversation with them this week, and I think it's something that, you know, we can continue to certainly explore, but they.
I haven't seen the agreement, David, is that pretty fair?
I think so, I, I'd be glad to send you a copy of it.
Just for, yeah, I, I don't have a lot of reading to do, so maybe I could do something for fun.
Yes, I think the concern there, and I, I agree with it, is, you know, there's a beautiful piece of property and, you know, second growth trees in there and some poplars, biggest poplars I've seen in the Villarica area, and I, you know, I'd hate to know that those poplars are on the chopping block, so to speak. So, you know, David, that, your.
I, I, that's my understanding also, I think their concern was wanting to keep trees there as much as they could, they don't want us turning it into baseball fields.
I like that.
Correct.
But at the same time, it can save the city some money if those areas where we do need some clearing, if they're going in and doing some of that tree removal, and we don't have to do that tree removal because we need the road and we need that parking lot, we've got to have the dog park, you know, you might want to leave something in there, but there was some discussion about whether the size was adequate or not, so when, even if we approve this, we're still kind of approving.
Conceptually, correct.
Okay.
You won't really know until you get into engineering, that's when things start to shape up a little bit more.
And that's where you can use the, the rack a lot more, the committee, those people with trying to assess sizes for big dog park or little dog park or something like that.
Well, and here's the thing that I, I need people to understand, that flat area is truly limited, you, we'd be going into, when we looked at the topography, some of that stuff starts to drop off fairly quickly, so, you know, our concern is, I understand that, hey, I don't think it's enough space for dogs, but if your space is really constrained just because of the, you know, site conditions.
If I don't go to fetch something and like not come back.
Right, you know, it, it, it's really that kind of situation, the, the, there's just constraints on the, on the site.
Now, I know this is conceptual, and that, I just want to make sure, when will we get down to some of the things that we talked about in these charrettes as far as what would be allowed out there? That's not now, but I want to make sure that we're still involved in that.
Sure, so let me bring up one particular issue that seemed to come up quite a bit, and the discussion was related to, one thing in particular was horses. You find that they are, they may be allowed in other parks, but logistically, how would that work here? And, you know, some of the issues or the discussion really concerned around, hey, if you're out there, you're, you're riding your horse, and I know people have been riding horses on this property for twenty-some years, but logistically, how are you cleaning up behind your horse? You know, people are out there walking, people may be biking, and how is this really going to work? And so the question is, you know, what we'll do is, again, it's something that, when we look at the rules, we can certainly come back and present something to you for you guys to weigh in a little bit more on the specifically such things as horses and their use of the park, and how, if it can be made to work, what that will look like. I think that's something that we can certainly look at this year, particularly as we move through engineering to kind of nail down specific uses that are allowable.
Vicky, I'd like to ask you a question, I think one thing that would be helpful for me is if you could formulate between Falcon Design and, and your staff, a timeline, realizing that that's not going to be a hard timeline, but just, you know, when is the, the engineering process going to take place because the council will be involved in it, but a timeline telling, you know, so that we know all the elements that are about to happen, because I know, having built several parks, there are several elements involved in this process. And so if we could sort of establish that, and if it's not asking too much, I'd like to see that on the, you know, for the next Tuesday agenda. And just given us, because, you know, if it's, if eighteen months is a, is a reasonable timeframe, at least we've told the public then, you know, what, what to look forward to. And, you know, this is all possible, of course, because of the Douglas County Special Purpose Local Option Sales Tax which passed, so, you know, that, this, that's a, that's a plus for us, but if you could work on that with, and just give us a rough idea, all the elements that are involved and how long it's going to take, that would, that would be great, I would personally like to see that.
Okay, will do.
One of the things that I like to see is the limitations that are placed on us from the company that donated, what, one hundred and fifty-nine acres? Just, just, I'm sure there's limitations that they put on that you can't put in this, this place, and to me, that would be important for people to understand, why don't we have this or why don't we have that out there, you know, it's because of limitations that we have no control over.
Yeah, the passive park, you know.
Correct.
Why we won't have four-wheelers or whatever, they need to understand.
Well, things, things like no motorized vehicles, you know, just whatever they, it's there, I like just a list of them, please.
Okay.
Other questions or comments? Moving on alone, thank you, Vicky.
Vicky, will you send me a copy of this, the, this size image?
Yes.
To my email? I don't have one.
Tab G, governing body, item one.
No, you better do it, because I, I know you sent it to me, but I don't remember exactly the changes you're making, it's really just in the selection of members though, isn't it?
I believe our city clerk has asked everybody to go to the microphone to make a statement.
Hello?
Low bid.
On behalf of the cemetery commissioners, we have a proposed amendment that we're presenting to you all, and, and basically it's just the, let me get down to that page just one minute. If you'll turn to the second page, this is the first page of the bylaws, and the change that we want to make is in section two, under membership, appointment term and vacancies, and you can see the sentences as that is struck over, it says, the membership of the cemetery commission shall include the following, instead of saying shall include the following, we would like for it to say the mayor shall strive to include appointees from the following organizations. The mayor makes the appointments, but frankly, we've been, we've had a hard time getting someone from these organizations to serve. We do have one from the funeral home, but the garden club is no longer an active club in Villarica. In fact, some of the members are resigning, and I'm not sure exactly what's going to happen to them, so we want to, the mayor to have an option.
So.
We do have a couple more people that would like to serve that have come to the meetings, but they're not a part of those organizations.
So really all you're doing is you're, you're wanting to broaden the pool of people who can serve instead of limiting it to come in from these three or four categories.
I mean, we want the mayor to try to get a member from these, and, you know, we've already got actually two members from the funeral home, but, you know, if you can't, you know.
If it says shall, then you shall, so we're.
Yeah, shall strive, yes.
Item two.
The meeting minutes, well, you will have those Monday morning.
Okay.
Item three.
I've been asked several times to take a look at the request that we re-up for the city of ethics pro, issued, issued by the Georgia Municipal Association, rather than trying to reinvent the wheel, I think we ought to just readopt the ordinance that we've had for about the last, I don't know how many years, last time we officially readopted it was 2015, and, but it was in place before that. They accepted this as being sufficient to be a city of ethics, and we've not had any problems with this ordinance as it's drafted. It does differ from their recommended model in that it is less complicated, but it has served us well enough so far.
I think if, if they are willing to accept that version, then I would be willing to do that, I don't like their version, not only because it's complicated, but because it really can offer a lot of folly if you read it. So I'm not going to be for that one, but if they would accept what we've already had and the rest of this council is happy with that, I would be.
And that's the only reason I proposed it, is just because they did accept it the last time?
We do have one problem though, don't we, because doesn't it require a board of ethics? And we didn't have a board of ethics?
Actually, Georgia Municipal Association has certain things that they require for us to become a city of ethics, and one of those, the adopted resolution must include at, or at least reference the definition of these principles that's listed on this form, David, and you probably need to take a look at it.
In, in our resolution that we will use to readopt this particular ordinance, I'll make sure all those are listed. But again, I, I go back to the fact that they accepted our ordinance last time as a sufficient for being a city of ethics, so I don't see the need to change.
Not knowing what Alyssa just handed you.
The, the principles say that our, our adopting resolution needs to say that we will serve others, not ourselves, use resources with efficiency and economy, treat all people fairly, use the power of our position for the well-being of our constituents, create an environment of honesty, openness and integrity. I'm assuming that nobody will be against those.
I think that's a safe assumption.
It's, it's kind of me.
David, this is a question for you. Section two dash one eighty-five calls for a board of ethics, did we, have we ever had a board of ethics?
We have had before, I don't think we do now.
And I don't think we've had one since I've been on, so we had this ordinance, but we didn't have the ethics board that it said that we had. I don't know how long that's been though.
Yeah.
I still think if, if they would approve it without that, I'd like to be called a city of ethics.
Sure.
Well, I don't have a problem with that, I just want to, you know, section two dash one eighty-five says the board of ethics will consist of three residents of the city, one appointed by the mayor, one appointed by the city council, and a third appointed by the mayor and approved by a majority of the city council, so, you know, I just.
It is, that is in there, we should appoint one. I, I think the thought process has been that until we need to have one, we'll wait till then, because we've not ever had a complaint filed in the last, gosh, fifteen years. We did have one one time.
Yeah, I think one of the concerns is, is addressed in that they can't be filed during certain times such as qualifying and the date of election results, and that's to try to avoid, and I don't know, I've seen this in some other cities, there's some weird things going on with ethics where it can be used.
Those are the shenanigans.
It can be used just for, yeah, political, political power and that sort of thing, trying to take somebody else down, I, I just, whatever we can do to protect from something being abused, but still serving the purpose it's supposed to, I'm okay. People need to have some way that they know what the process is if they did have a complaint.
And this, and this sets that forth. We do want to tell the people that we believe that we are a city of ethics, and there is a mechanism for someone to voice a complaint if they have one. At the same time, there are procedures in here to weed out, you know, frivolous complaints that people are just filing for the sake of tying up city business.
Further questions? Okay. Item four.
Item four is the proposed charter amendment that I've drawn up. As you recall, we went through a process last year of deciding that we needed to completely revamp our city charter, and the process bogged down once we had a couple of vacancies in office, and we were waiting until we got the new mayor and new council person elected, which we have now, but there's not enough time, there was not enough time to go through the full review process to come up with a complete revision during the time of this meeting of the general assembly. During the course of our charter review last year though, there were a couple of problems that were defined. problems that were defined that, to me, considered, seemed to be significant and needed to be addressed immediately. This is one of those, in that we had three sections in our city charter dealing with the appointment and removal of city managers. One said the city manager is, serves at the pleasure of the council. Uh, another one setting forth that a city manager could only be removed for cause, and then setting forth a procedure to go through to remove that city manager by cau- for cause. Because we have entered into a contract with our last three, maybe four, city managers, which sets forth, you know, what they're, uh, how they can be removed, and has always been at the pleasure of the council, I thought it appropriate for us to rem- to remove those conflicting sections from the charter. Uh, so that's what this does, is it makes the city, makes the city charter state that the city manager serves at the pleasure of the council.
Okay, so basically, what we're doing here is, in, in preparation for hiring a new city manager, you know, we're making sure that our charter doesn't conflict with the contract that, that we may enter into with a new city manager.
Correct.
Uh, it does not mean that we're not gonna revisit, in fact, I would say we probably are, based on what I've been told. We are gonna revisit the city charter, uh, moving forward, and hopefully get that, uh, where we can get it approved by the state legislature next year. Is that a...
We, we ought to set a, a deadline for ourselves to try and have that review process completed by November of this year.
Cause there are still things in there that need to go to the...
Absolutely.
But there was, uh, another item that we were gonna do on home rule. Maybe we'll talk about that separately.
Y- y- yes, I, I don't, I don't, you've asked me about it, and I just don't have it ready yet, but it is something that does, that, that was one of the things I believe was taken in my draft, that I compiled of the whole thing. Um, there were a number of sections that were removed, um, and we do need to discuss all of those, and, and determine whether or not we want to move forward faster under the home rule provisions, uh, rather than waiting till a complete rewrite. The only thing that we cannot change under the home rule provisions is we can't change the composition of the governing authority. We can't just decide that we're gonna have eight council people.
Moving right along, council retreat. I guess I'll lead the discussion, just to, we have, we are contracted, uh, with an individual now, uh, to do a council retreat. It's my understanding he has been paid in full, um, so, you know, that's, that's one issue, you know, I've discussed with, with a few of you that, uh, perhaps, and this, I'm just throwing this out for discussion, we may want to have two council retreats, uh, one now, and, uh, and one when we get a city manager. That's just my thought. The thought there was that, you know, we, we have to move from this point to that point, so, uh, city, uh, council meetings are not the best forum, uh, for, for having discussions where we can talk about things like the charter, uh, and like budgets, and, and other things that we may wish to talk about, because they're not on the agenda. And, uh, of course, the public's invited, there's nothing, nothing hidden about those. It just gives us more of a chance to plan, so, my thought process there was that, that it would give us a chance to, like I said, to move from this point where we are right now, to the point where we have a new city manager, and then, when we have that new city manager, then have that retreat and include such things as budget for 2018, uh, the city charter and, and other things. But that's, that's just my, you know, my thoughts.
Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm getting ready to leave in just a second, but I don't know if anybody with the city has consulted with Mr. Weed to find out what the terms of his agreement with the city were. If you'd like for me to, I'll contact him to see, uh, you know, exactly what our agreement with him was, you know, why we paid him in advance, and whether or not any of that's refundable if we don't choose to use his services. I, I just don't know.
I think somebody needs to talk to him. I, I kept getting messages from him, I never returned them, because we're in the middle of ma- making changes. Somebody needs to tell him what's going on, so we can use him after we get a new city manager.
Yeah, well, I'll, I'll call him and talk to him about it, 'cause, I mean, I, I don't know what our deal with him is, and he's an honorable person, and I'm sure he'll tell us what it is.
Well, I think that's fair. I think we nee- and we also need to know if there was a, a timeframe, we had to get that done.
Right, I, I don't know.
But, to the mayor's point, uh, I think we should do one, a retreat with our interim, because we do have things that we need to be working on. Um, and then, you know, it's down the road, but I, I wouldn't oppose a second one myself.
Well, I don't know how much he was paid and paid it in advance, and that's an issue in and of itself, but the worst he can say if we ask for our money back is, "No, we can at least try," 'cause, uh, at this point, there's no date set. Uh, we didn't have a date set, so he didn't give up his life in order to schedule us in or whatever.
I guess the question is, do we want to have two at this point, or do we just want to have the one, and then David's gonna research, uh, with Mr. Weed, you know, what the terms of his contract were.
I think we ought to consider how much it cost.
I think, I heard the number seven thousand dollars is what we paid him.
Two, how much?
Seven thousand.
Two retreats? Oh.
He's got, he's got the money, so. We need the retreat, sooner or later.
I'll report back to you.
Thank you, David. Further discussion?
What, were we talking about setting dates today? Is that what we were gonna do? Or are we just gonna talk about, because we, we know we've already paid for one. Now, yes, he may ask if we can get our money back, but it seemed like, to me, I got a lot of positive feedback from you all that the retreat was worth having. Are you suggesting that it's not?
It was, but I think we're talking about whether we should do two and pay twice.
I think we have business to take care of right now, and it feels like that needs to happen.
Do we need a tr- retreat?
Well, we don't...
In order to work through those next four months, because we're gonna, we're go- we are going to need with one, with whoever becomes the permanent city manager.
Yeah, and we don't, the retreats do not conduct business there.
Visioning...
Uh, vision stuff is all it is.
Your goals.
Having been through one or two of them.
And there's nothing that says, says you have to pay someone any amount of money to, to be the facilitator.
I think really, we have staff that could probably be a facilitator. I think we really need to wait for Mr. Mecklen to talk to him and see where we stand before we move forward.
Other discussion? Okay.
They definitely don't have anything to do, they probably love to facilitate a retreat. Just kidding, just kidding.
And, and I would like to just mention this, and some, I think I've told everybody, but, um, we have had, um, Woodland Christian Retreat in Temple volunteer their, uh, place at, for the retreat, and, uh, they would charge seventy-five dollars a day, so if we had it for two days, which I think is what y'all had in the past, then it would be a hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, they also have a, a commissary there, so if you wanted to eat at a cafeteria, they'll, they'll provide the meals for a, for a set amount, but, uh, that's, that's a pretty good deal. And again, these are open to the public, there's nothing, we're not trying to hide anything, it's just, it's just time for the council to, to meet, and for the public to come in and hear what's going on for the city, so, um, but that, that is something that I would just offer up, so. Okay, item six, Planning and Zoning Commission.
I think that listed as number nine for some reason, but, that's really, um, replacing my representative. And I don't have anybody out in my ward that has asked to do that, so, I'm going with Gil's gracious recommendation.
Okay, discussion?
No, I looked over the name, I mean, usually you choose someone. I have it as item nine. We still doing the other two items?
Uh, I have seven and eight, yeah.
Okay.
Seven is, uh, Georgia Cities Week.
Yeah.
Yeah, this actually is item six, I had it as nine, but I guess there is no nine.
We've, the agenda's been revised, I mean, revised a few times.
And reviewed.
So, Georgia Cities Week, this is just a resolution to recognize Georgia Cities Week, which will be April the twenty-third through the twenty-ninth, and encourage all citizens to support the celebration and corresponding activities. Any problems with that or questions? Okay. Item eight, Annual Citywide Cleanup, also known as, I think Roland Best and Councilman Marchman were the first two to bring this up, uh, many, many years ago, when I was a city employee, so, I will let y'all run with that.
You gonna speak with it, Ms. Marchman?
I, I was trying to pull it up on my, I went to the, um, Three Rivers, you know, I'm Villarica representative, and they, I've got it in my phone, I haven't had a chance to look at it, but they've got a program that, uh, they recycle, you know, picking up old tires and things, that you can be refunded some money, but I might forward it to one of y'all, so y'all can look at it, 'cause, but I hadn't, I know they brought it up, excuse me, at the meeting, and, uh, she was gonna send out something, 'cause people were asking about it, so, she did send me an email, but I'll get it to you.
You go ahead and forward that to my email address.
And then Alyssa can make a copy of it and make sure he gets it.
Okay.
I, Ms. Marchman and I, for about fifteen, twenty years, have talked about cleaning the city up, and, and the bottom line is, we say no a lot of times to what people have put out on the side of the road, or want to put out on the side of the road. This would be a week before the grass turns green, greener, I should say now, because it's already turning, to go in and pick everything up, uh, the same way we've done now for the last ten or twelve years, um, and, and make our city cleaner. Jamison Green, our stormwater person, he, he goes through different streams each year, and they, they have a, a stream cleanup, uh, and sometimes he coincides that with, with our citywide pickup. Uh, basically, what takes place is, uh, with the five wards we have, you, the ward, uh, you don't put out everything on Sunday afternoon, expect it to be picked up on Monday. It goes Ward One for instance, in fact, last year, um, they put it down as, as different colors, and, but whatever ward it's gonna be on Monday, they would know that on Sunday, and then Ward Two, or maybe Three, or Four, whatever, that would, uh, go by a date that they put their stuff out. The city would be responsible, two things. Number one, to have people to help pick up, all the stuff is there. Number two, uh, u- utilizing all the boot camp crews, uh, in some cases, maybe the community of service people, but to be able to pick all these things up, which brings up another question about tires. Well, I don't know when the, the person is coming, or the, the company is coming on board...
Beautiful.
Um, is, with the tire reclamation in, in industrial park.
What was that again?
Uh, Vicky's still here.
That's March eighteenth.
Is it March eighteenth?
At the Vplex, right?
Yes.
No, 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 no.
Oh, different.
No, 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 no.
That's for the tires.
The tire reclamation center in, in industrial park, there is a company that is, is starting up sometime soon, I don't know when, but it's starting up, that you can recycle tires, either, I don't know if it's gonna be from the public, or from somebody like a, uh, what Vicky's talking about, having a, 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 a tire cleanup or whatever, but they're talking about being able to take these tires, go, go in, shred them, paint them, and then sell them back to the, the general public to be able to use, or mulch them, or whatever. They do have some out, um, in the, in the industrial park. Um, actually, when you go by the, the field, back field, right there and turn left...
Yeah.
And then, it's, it's, it's out there on the right, and I think it's a, a, a light brown...
Ross Williams.
Yeah, yeah. It's a light brown texture, but it's, uh, I don't know. Anyway, instead of taking all the, the tires and saying, "We don't want them," but we might be able to take those tires, recycle them, and put them in certain, you know, some places, maybe even the passive park to walk on. Um, but anyway, the, that would take the, uh, the city, uh, I think, uh, Jeremy Dukes has said last year it cost us about, uh, seven thousand dollars, I think, maybe a little bit more, but, uh, to, to do this, but I think it's well worth, um, getting all the things that, that, uh, you normally don't, don't have picked up. The people that are, um, unable to, to bring the stuff to the, the, uh, to the side of the road, if they call City Hall and give them their name and address, uh, somebody will come out and determine whether or not, uh, they will bring the boot camp crew. The person that's doing that has to sign a waiver to allow the boot camp crew to go on the property, and soup, and they will be there to supervise it along with the guard, and move the, the, uh, whatever it is to the side of the road, and, and, and put it in the trucks. Uh, that just allows the people that are, are, uh, uh, maybe sick, or like me, too old, to bend over, um, and pick things up, of the ability to, to clean their yards up as well. Uh, I, I think the biggest ability of all this is be able to, uh, cut the grass when they're supposed to be cutting the grass, and not have to worry about running over whatever somebody else has thrown out. Uh, the downfall to all this is there will be some people that will come in from, who knows, and, and throw their stuff on somebody's property to be able to pick up, and, and, and we're saying, "No, we can't pick it up," and these, here, these folks are out in them, uh, out, whatever. So, you know, we'll have to just take that on, on, uh, individual case by case, and, and then determine how we're gonna handle that, but pretty much, uh, ninety-five percent, uh, of the city will be cleaned up, and, and, uh, you know, if, we do that another year, we'll be able to, to, uh, drive through and, and be proud of what our city looks like.
Who did you say the dates? How many dates?
I don't have a problem with doing the, the, uh, the dates that we have from last year, not these same dates, but to back it up.
Uh, Jamison mentioned the last week of March.
That'd be fine. I don't think there's any conflict of anything of that nature.
And I commend y'all for doing this, and, and I can tell you, when I moved here in ninety-eight, one of the things that stuck out most was that Villarica was a very clean city, and I think that's a combination of our residents and our, and our government working together. Uh, scroll that screen up a little bit, this is the time for a little, little lawyer disclaimer here. Uh, we do not pick up automobiles, boats, car parts, chrysoteared wood, cross ties, hazardous materials, uh, household garbage, petroleum-based products, rocks, or dirt, items weighing more than five hundred pounds, uh, no freon-based appliances or equipment, paint cans, unless the lids are removed and the paint dried and mixed with sand, petroleum-based products, roofing shingles, uh, what's that other?
Trailers.
Trailers, unbagged lawn clippings, or leaves, so, uh, and that always comes up, does it not, Charlie? Every year, that, that's an issue, that someone puts out a car on the side of the road, and we can't, have to go pick it up, or they want us to, so, but I, I think it's a great idea, and kudos to y'all for, for coming up with that, I think it makes our city look a lot cleaner. So, we'll shoot for the last week in, uh, March. Okay, now we talk about, the consent agenda.
We have to be careful, since David's not here, to make sure, anything that needs a hearing, things that we can't put on.
Citywide cleanup, starting March, is that, March twenty-seventh, two thousand seventeen? Has that been put out somewhere? Is, is that not what, what Vicky's talking about with tires and whatever at, at someplace? March twenty-seventh?
No, that's March eighteenth.
No, March eighteenth, that's the keep care of beautiful event.
Oh, okay.
The Vplex. And we need to advertise as much as possible, too, so...
It is, and it's, and it's starting on the twenty-seventh.
Okay, well, I guess what we'll do is just go down the list, and y'all tell me, you know, consent or no consent, just, um, let me hear what you want to do. Let's see, I, I think there's a benefit, and Sarah, don't shoot me for saying this, I think there's a benefit in Sarah being here, uh, for our city council meetings, because I think the public needs to know where we stand financially, so...
I agree. You gotta be able to look at her smile, I mean, thank you.
That's for the financial report.
That's number A-one. Now, A-two...
That's A-one. A-two?
A-two looks like consent to me, and A-three does, too.
Consent.
Everybody?
Yep.
Two and three? Just say no if you disagree, okay?
Looking.
All right, um, item three?
Consent, oh.
Consent?
Yep.
Anybody say any difference?
You said, "Say no."
Are you on the holiday payday? Where are you?
Right.
You said no? Or no.
Item four? Consent?
Yep.
Tab B, item one.
Wait a minute, on item four, um, is there something here we've approved, and then serve a proposal?
We, we approved it, or somebody approved it back in nineteen eleven, it seemed like, uh, more like six seventy-something, so, you know, it's, they, they're already the per- the, uh, engineers doing it, so...
But, since there's something about us saying yes, that we'll do the maintenance and lighting?
That was on two.
Let's do this, uh, I'll put a question mark on number two and number four, and I'll ask David Mecklen. Let's do this, I'll put a question mark by number two and number four, and I'll ask David Mecklen.
Aight.
All right, tab B, item one?
We just basically had to tell her to go ahead and post it, right? It's not?
Right, so that's removed. Item two?
I think we need to discuss those things, bring it up from the people.
Okay. So, that's on. Holiday pay for part-time employees, item three?
No.
No, no, item two is on the agenda.
So, it's a no on consent.
Item three?
I think it's a no, too, I think it needs to be brought up.
Okay, on. Tab C, item one, Main Street Advisory Board?
Consent.
Wait a second, don't we have to approve those people?
No, they did.
We have it, we have it.
They had it sworn in, though, I think.
It doesn't still somehow come through us?
Yeah, that needs to be on.
It still hasn't come to us, that has to stay on.
That's not consent. No, that's on the agenda.
Okay.
Item two?
People should see that, don't you think?
Sure was a big, long PowerPoint presentation. Oh, boy, that's.
And if it goes on, there's no PowerPoint.
That's blackmail, but I love those PowerPoints.
Sound like a threat.
What is your desire?
Just a quick little, I mean, it still is.
You're asking him to do a quick little?
It's a no, on, it is an on.
On, ah, life.
Three has to be because we have to approve.
Yep, item three is on, okay, tab D, item one?
When you say on, that's not consent.
On the agenda.
It's on the agenda, okay. Consent would be on the consent agenda.
That was information only.
Yep. D1 was information only. Two is still in discussion.
We're just waiting, right?
Wait a minute, let me think about this. That is not correct, right Pete? That needs to be on the agenda.
One and two, yeah.
But it needs to be on the consent agenda.
Yeah.
You're talking about updating the model, you're talking about D1.
Yeah, it's been done, it's in the process, it's in the process of going on now.
They don't need money?
Are you gonna update the model, or what? What's the deal there?
Yeah.
So, it's already been approved? So, we don't need to do anything with it?
Come on up, Sarah, we need help.
The procurement ordinance says when there is an emergency situation, which this was considered an emergency situation, the department heads can work with finance and the city manager to get that approved, so we can get it started, and we bring it to y'all to ratify it. So, like you said, it's already in process because it was considered a public emergency, but we just need y'all to.
We need to ratify it.
We need to have it on the agenda, just be on the agenda.
And it's on, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Paving project update?
We're basically waiting for now?
There's no consent there, I mean, there's no, nothing to vote on.
We'll talk about this one.
Yeah, there's nothing to vote on on that. Yep, now, D3 is obviously consent.
So, removed?
Means Charlie don't have to come.
Oh, I like Charlie sitting out there, I think.
I don't have a problem with him, he looks like he's enjoying it.
Yeah. Vehicle purchase?
Well, that is D3, I think that's consent.
Already budgeted?
Yeah, it is, well, it's a budget item.
It's budgeted, and he came in with the local prices.
Okay, item four, which is a CDBG grant, let's see, do we need to? No, we're not, because I had added four.
You jumped over something here, were you?
No, I didn't.
Are you on E?
Not yet, because I added CDBG grant status, and then Sarah came up and talked to us, but we don't have to put that on there. I just, you know, I hope that we get those signatures.
Okay, so, there is a, there's a D4, huh?
Yep.
That's what that was.
Okay, item E1, community service update?
That's what it is, update.
Remove. Item two, surplus?
Same thing.
Yeah.
Consent or remove?
Don't we have to consent on that?
I can see it, I mean, I.
Consent. Probably 78 yards, though?
It means we don't vote on it, it just all goes together, right?
Consent. Ma'am?
Put it on the list.
Yeah, that way at least it's on the, you know, people will know what is going on. Item four?
Already budgeted and everything, right, consent?
I was just trying to get Charlie here somewhere. Tab F1 fireworks, consent?
I want to get into some more details about this. Three, four, five, and, I'm just kidding.
I'll screw you on some fireworks.
There's only two people.
I can bring some fireworks on that one.
Number two, Connors Road Park?
Kind of seems like we ought to have something on that with all the public input and everything.
I think so, I think, everybody agree, I think that needs to be on there?
I agree, on the agenda.
All right, tab G1, cemetery bylaws?
Do we have to vote on anything?
Consent.
Uh, that's a good question.
We have to vote on it? If we vote on it, we gotta.
Yeah, it's gotta be on there, because we have to vote on it.
Okay.
That's what we came to.
Do we have to vote on that?
Yeah, don't we have to vote on it because it's a change in the bylaws? Yeah.
So, it's not on consent, then?
It's on the.
It's on the record, yeah.
Okay, and then we'll have the minutes, and that'll be on, so that'll be on.
They want to vote on it?
Yeah, it'll be on the agenda.
Has a change, yeah.
Of course, the minutes will be on the agenda, and then city of ethics?
Consent.
It's not a consent item.
Well, it's a change.
I think we have to have a resolution from the council.
Oh, two meetings? Is that thing?
So, that's gonna require a public vote, so it'll have to be on there. Right, but we'll have to vote on it, so it'll have to be on.
Charter amendment, that has to stay on.
Item four, charter amendment?
I think it's the agenda item.
Yeah, I think so.
The council retreat, really, we just need some input from Mecklen.
So, leave it on the agenda. Still have that refund, just leave it on the agenda.
Item six, planning and zoning commission, let's see, that'll have to be on, because we'll have to approve those folks. Georgia Cities Week?
We have to adopt.
It's a resolution, so that'll be on. Annual city cleanup, we probably need to leave that one on there just for information purposes.
I agree.
Let Verlin talk a little more.
Yeah, Verlin did a good job on that, and Ms. Early.
Can I mention two things real quick?
Real quick.
I know, it's been a long meeting. A lot of citizens really like, one thing that they really liked that happened, was all the flow of information. I don't know who we have to think that's getting the Monday Villarica happenings out, but I know a lot of people have said they would hate to see that stop. You know, David handled a lot of that, that flow of information, letting people know when things were up and what was happening, and if a road was shut down. And the only other thing is, had an issue come up with which bathrooms were getting cleaned on a certain city building, and that sort of thing, and we had talked some about hiring services, or custodian, or something like that. Has anything else ever come out of that? Because we were talking about the expense that some of these groups charge for cleaning, and whether we should even hire somebody like a custodian?
Here comes the cavalry.
I had done that for you, so, I just wanted to make sure we didn't forget it.
Sarah, for not leaving, you knew we were gonna need you.
The plug over there didn't work, otherwise I'd be closer. During the budget, we got the feedback that, when we discussed hiring a custodian, but it seemed like y'all wanted us to go out to RFP, we're still hiring a company, so we're still putting that together. We have to get the specs from each department on, you know, what needs to be cleaned where and stuff, so. It's definitely on the to-do list, sooner rather than later.
And will it make a difference with community service coming back on board at all? No, okay.
Vicky, this is a question for you, too, I think, and this kind of dovetails with that, is right now, who's cleaning the restrooms at the library?
Staff, and when the detail comes over to help out, but again, they're still in their slower time, which was one of the things that I wanted to stress. One of the things that had been part of our earlier conversation, we had a custodian, a part-time custodian position, which we had previously been asked to, you know, hold on that in terms of where the decision was going to go. That was something I certainly wanted to get with the city manager about, because we were essentially trading our money off for that position, paying into the service. I would much rather, since I still have the position, it was something that I was gonna talk about, to just move forward, and that person could split their time, that way we knew we had a dedicated person between the library and the building, that our current building, it's the same, we have a company right now that the city owns, that's going around cleaning all the buildings. I think I would get a much better return just moving forward with the position that I have, pulling out of that, and letting the city move forward, just to make sure that library, gold dust, are truly addressed. And that was one of the things I was just gonna move forward with on our end.
Get Mr. Jackson on that, and y'all come to a conclusion about it. I just, you know, that's a beautiful library, and I want to make sure it stays beautiful, so. Whatever the best solution is on that, Mike, just, okay. Do I hear motion, we adjourn?
We don't need them.
I don't need a motion to adjourn, so we adjourn.
Oh, my gosh, yes, I'm telling you, I'm gonna have to send him a subscription.
Send him a get sick card.
Oh, I know, you're really my first cousin.
Yeah, he told me, he called me when he found out I was here, you know, because he was.